We currently have six members present. We may have a seventh one join us. It will take four votes for majority. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record, so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them on a later date if necessary. If you all could check your phones and make sure they're on mute or off, would appreciate it on that. We will go ahead and start with the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the September 30th, 2021 minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections, the minutes will stand as presented. Next item on the agenda is CSP 21-002.
We need to take a vote on the minutes? No?
Oh, no we don't?
Yeah.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Tom Hutchison?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If no discussion, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Tom Hutchison?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0.
Next item on the agenda, CSP 21-002, property owner, Finley Family Properties Limited, applicant A&amp;B Sign Company, Inc., a request for the Comprehensive Sign Plan Amendment for Finley GMC dealership on APN 106-08-088B, 1008 Commerce Drive. Tammy?
Thank you. Good morning Chairman, members of the Commission. Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner at the City Prescott. So back in 2016, there was a Comprehensive Sign Plan approved for this dealership to allow for three freestanding signs and four wall mount signs totaling 278 square feet, which is beyond what they are allowed to have per our sign code. Hence, we have the Comprehensive Sign Plan process. Today's request is to add two new wall mount signs for an additional 152 square feet of signage to replace the temporary directional sign banners they have on the property now. So here's the sign, the sign package, what will, if you approve or recommend approval will move forward. So these are the existing signs here for the 310.2 square feet is what they have. And then what they're asking for is for the two new signs, they'll be permanent signs, and then they'll have a total of 462.2 square feet of signage for that property. Here's the subject property. It's actually these two parcels right here. This is the dealership's property, and we have Commerce and Willow Creek Road. It is zoned industrial light, which allows for the car dealerships. Here's the imagery of the property. So we have the four existing monument signs here along Willow Creek Road. And then we have the three signs, two signs are already on the building. Over here on this side, over here on the side is where the new signs will be going, which aren't very visible from the road. So here's from Google Earth, from Street View. So we have the one, two, three, four signs that are existing monuments. And so back here on this back building back here is where these signs will go, where the banners are now. So here's a picture of one of the signs that's being proposed. And then here's our other sign. They do meet our requirements for signage and colors, so there's gonna be no problem getting permitted as long as we get the Comprehensive Sign Plan approved. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions and...
Do any commission members have questions of staff?
I do. I just want to make sure, there are currently banners right there, right? I mean, they look exactly the same and just so the public is aware. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does the applicant want to make a comment or anything?
No.
Okay.
(laughing)
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend the approval of CSP 21-002, a Comprehensive Sign Plan for the Finley GMC dealership as submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any further comments? If not, Kaylee, would you call?
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Next on the agenda is REZ 21-008, property owner, Granite Property Investments LLC, applicant Granite Basin Engineering, a request for a rezoning from RE 2 acre, Rural Estate 2 acre, to BG Business General to allow for a mini storage and commercial facility on APN 106-02-052C at 5900 Willow Creek Road. And George, you want to make a little presentation before we start this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm George Williams, the Planning Manager for the city. Because both of the items involve a rezoning that are associated with the city's general plan, I want to give you just a little overview of the general plan and the current zoning and the proposed zoning. So this will be in addition to the presentation that Tammy will make next on REZ 21-008. And then I will follow that after your action on that one with REZ 21-007. The city originally did a general plan under state guidelines in 2001. It was adopted and formally voted on by the voters in 2003. And that general plan laid out land use that was anticipated for the future. Zoning is land use that's today, and the general plan looks at future land uses. In some cases, the future land uses and the existing land uses were determined to stay the same, and they remain the same in the general plan that was adopted. In 2015, the city re-adopted its general plan after a review, taking into account minor modifications to state law, and more importantly, larger modifications to the existing development pattern in the city. So we've looked at it as recently as 2015, and the city's about to kick off another general plan review and update, probably sometime in the coming year, in order to do the same thing we did then. Look at the development patterns and look at all those impacts on development. In this particular case, what we're looking at are properties along here. This is Willow Creek Road, Pioneer Parkway, 89A. This is the Pinion Oaks neighborhood. And then as we go further south, there are a number of other commercial uses, including a larger commercial area here. And then these designated uses that are mostly still residential in zoning today. The south end of that area was rezoned a commercial some time ago to allow for commercial uses on those two larger properties. The remainder of that strip is still currently zoned residential. Just to zoom in a little bit better, there are two rezoning requests for you today. One is here. That will be the first one you hear. The second one is here. This is the main entrance to Pinion Oaks off of Willow Creek Road. Each of those areas are designated in the general plan to be commercial properties primarily because of Willow Creek Road. The volume of traffic on Willow Creek Road does not lend itself to residential development immediately adjacent to it. Commercial development is appropriate adjacent to high-volume streets. And even in 2001, we knew Willow Creek Road would become a high-volume street with the completion of 89A and its connection to Pioneer Parkway. So the designation in the general plan is commercial. You can see there are two types of commercial designations. The general commercial, which basically allows for most of our commercial uses, and then commercial employment, which allows for industrial uses as well. So some industrial uses, heavier uses, auto dealerships may fall into that category. General commercial uses would fall into the general commercial category. This is from the Central Yopai Metropolitan Planning Organization's 2017 data. I could not come up with their more recent data at this point. The numbers are the numbers of vehicles that pass that particular location in thousands each day. So at the point where the red arrow is pointing, which is the entrance to Pinion Oaks, 25,000 cars a day pass that intersection. That is three years old. That number could be 30,000 today. Traffic patterns change over time. We redo these traffic counts on a regular basis in order to account for the fact that drivers will change the direction they go. Sometimes 89 is better, sometimes Willow Creek is better. Those numbers change in value. The number we have solidly is 25,000. Again, it could be somewhat higher. The two properties in question are both large undeveloped tracts. They are zoned RE 2 acre. That's a very large lot, 2 acre minimum lot size residential zoning. It's rural estate. Rural is an important part of that. That zoning designation was put in place for properties that were intended to develop in very large lots, typically away from high-volume roadways and away from lower density or higher, excuse me, higher density development, like you see in Pinion Oaks. Rural Estate 2 acre is designed to be a rural or agricultural character designation. That is the designation's intent. It's intended, again, for those peripheral properties in town that are larger, away from the more urban development patterns and away from the higher-volume streets. The requests for both of the rezonings today are to Business General. Business General is a district that allows a wide range of uses. To help you with that in your agenda packet, I copied in the use table, even though I know you have the Land Development Code to make it easy to actually see what those uses are. They are typically, those districts are typically located on high-volume roadways. Collectors or arterial streets are typically very high-volume roadways. In this particular case, with Willow Creek Road at 25,000 or more, the Business General zoning does make sense from the standpoint of the general plan, and the general plan designation was done to, in anticipation of that volume of traffic on the street. So that doesn't mean that you need to recommend in favor of a rezoning just based on that. There are other considerations that you will hear along the way today, both from staff's presentations and from nearby neighbors. But the general plan's designation of commercial use along that strip is based on the fact that any other use would be inappropriate along that strip. And you cannot render a property unusable through zoning. So in this particular case, the city's anticipation has been for years that something commercial will happen there. So that was just to give you a little bit of a heads up, a little bit of information that we can talk about further as we go through each of the projects. Again, the idea is to make sure everyone understands the circumstances that we're working from. Not a constraint on your decision-making, just additional information for your decision-making.
George, when the city annex land into, from the county into the city, it usually comes in at rural 2, RE 2, doesn't it?
It depends on what the property was zoned in the county.
And most of the county is?
A lot of its large lot rural zoning, because it's used by the county similar to what we use it for. It's kind of a holding zoning. It has to have a zoning of some kind. You don't want to give it a zoning that's higher intensity than the county's current zoning, so you give it one that's equivalent, and often they come in with that RE 2 acre designation.
And it stays that zoning until?
Until someone asks.
The property owner decides what they want to do with it.
Correct. When someone asks and when council takes action to rezon the property, then potentially a change occurs.
Here's the subject property in question. This is the property on the south side of Pinion Oaks Drive. We have Willow Creek Road here, and we have Pioneer Parkway. As you can see, Pinion Oaks, Pinion Oaks in this area is fully developed. And to the south of this property, we do have an existing church. Churches are allowed in a residential zoning district with a conditional use permit. And on this southern one here, south of this, we also have another church that was approved a few months ago through the Board of Adjustments. So we do, we will see be seeing another church on this property. And we haven't had any inquiries about any further of the properties to the south at this time. Here's a zoning map of the area. As George stated, we do have the Commercial Business Regional on the other side of Willow Creek Road. And as we go further south past this holding zone area, we do have other commercial uses as well as the area where the proposed banner hospital is going on the other side of Willow Creek Road. So we are starting to see the commercial developments start to occur in this corridor. Here's a picture of the subject property from Willow Creek Road. This is on the south end. As you see, there is an embankment here, which limits any access off of Willow Creek Road to this property. And here's another one, like in the other direction towards town. It is flatter on the end towards Pinion Oaks Road. Then it starts to, the elevations do change on this property. Here are some other pictures from Willow Creek Road. And here's the site plan that was brought forward as part of the application. So right here is Willow Creek Road, and this is Pinion Oaks Drive. Here's where the proposed, it'd be a two-story mini storage building, approximately about 20,000, oh, sorry, 49,000 square feet. And then over here, we have a proposed commercial building, which may have multiple uses. We haven't seen any plans for that yet, but this is where the building would go. And the access here would be onto Pinion Oak Drive. Due to this embankment along Willow Creek Road, there is no place where really anybody could access or create a safe access. And then we do, are limiting a lot of new access points onto Willow Creek Road, so that all the traffic will be generated down here on this part of Pinion Oaks Drive to come out onto Willow Creek Road, on and off. Here's some cross-sections that was provided. So right here, we have Willow Creek Road. And this green line here is, I put in here to kind of show how the elevations drop. This is the elevations. So as the property is developed, some of this will not be very visible from Willow Creek Road. And then as they get towards where the houses are adjacent to it, there will be a landscape buffer to minimize the impact, the visual impact from the neighbors, which is required per our Land Development Code. So some things that we look at with rezonings is the compatibility to the area. We look at the surrounding zoning and development, and as we can see, this is in a commercial corridor overlay district. It was designated in our general plan as commercial. So we are seeing the commercial development start to happen coming up Willow Creek Road to this intersection. As George said, there's a lot of traffic in this area, so it is going to be prone to development at some time in the future. Like I said, our general plan and our commercial corridor overlay do support this type of use. The traffic, they are going to have to do a traffic impact analysis for this project to see if there's going to be any other improvements required at that intersection with Pinion Oaks and Willow Creek Drive. We have not seen a traffic impact analysis yet, but it will be required prior to any building permits being issued to see if there's going to be any other requirements for infrastructure for that intersection. There have been talks about a possible, since it's how close it is to 89, that intersection, a stoplight would not be sufficient. It's too close. It doesn't meet the requirements with that speed through that area. What has been discussed as a possibility is a roundabout at that intersection to keep the traffic moving, but nothing has been put in place or decided at this time until we see a traffic impact analysis for that intersection. As I stated, the commercial corridor overlay does require additional landscaping when it's adjacent to residential. So they are going to have to heavily landscape that area adjacent to the residences. And they do have that as a landscape buffer area on their plans. So it will meet all the code requirements also for the commercial corridor or district overlay. And we did our public notification. We, state statutes require for our public notification, notification, we only go out 300 feet. For this application, we did go out 1,350 square feet out, and this is a buffer. And we use this with both applications, so we made sure to get all of the Unit 1 Pinion Oaks, figuring it will, it will get the word out pretty fast when you do that. So here's our recommendation, recommended actions, either to approve or deny the application as presented in substantial conformance with the site plan. So as long as they develop it, they develop it per the site plan in general conformance, substantial conformance, but basically the same uses and the same layout, then we can move forward with building permits if this is actually, if this is approved by city council. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And we do have the applicant here too.
Thank you, Tammy. Questions for staff? Tom?
Yeah, Tammy, could you please clarify for me? What's the height requirement for Business General?
50 feet.
50 feet.
Other questions for staff?
I got a question when I get back to my. Tammy, you had a slide that showed elevations, and it was one before the slide that said compatibility. Thank you. So the height of the building is?
It's going to be two-story. I believe it's only about 30 feet.
30 feet? Okay, so, taking into account the change in elevation, what's the net viewable height from Willow Creek? Roughly.
So that's 10. Depends on which cross-section you look at. It could be probably about 20 feet of it, like half of it.
Okay. And then from the Pinion Oaks side, their view, how tall would the buildings appear to be?
Their size, because it does go down in elevation as you get to the residential. But they are required to have that landscape buffer, which they have on their plans.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Tammy, I have one. When we do a traffic analysis, does that contemplate the potential new property, buildings here, what they're doing and so forth?
Yes. So what they'll do is they'll take what's being proposed on this property, and they have numbers through the national traffic standards that they have to use for different types of uses. And then they'll take the traffic count numbers, and hopefully we'll get an updated traffic count on that for that area. And then they do an analysis to see what's going to be required from that as future improvements for that intersection, and if it's going to be able to be phased, or if it's required right away, do the traffic numbers. And if there's a possibility of another access onto Willow Creek Road. I mean, these are all things that will be looked at with our traffic engineer and working with the applicant on their traffic impact analysis.
So before the analysis can be done, we have to have an idea of who's going to be the occupants of the office building. Is that true? Because medical would generate different traffic pattern than an office for an accountant.
And we would assume they'd use the highest numbers that are a possibility for those buildings of what they have. That's usually how they do those traffic impact, the highest and best use of the property.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. Tammy, have we done a traffic analysis to incorporate the impact of adding Banner Hospital?
Yes, they did do a traffic impact analysis for that development, hence why there is a traffic signal there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Is the applicant here and want to make a statement?
Are they on Zoom? If you are, please raise your hand. We'll be getting to public comment shortly. Okay, I thought they were here.
Huh. Kind of hard to ask questions of the applicant if the applicant isn't here.
Yes, it is. And they're not on Zoom either, so I'm, I didn't hear from them.
Well, let's go to public comments.
Unfortunately, we don't have the applicant handy, but if there are anybody in the audience here who would like to make a comment concerning this particular request, we are open for public input. And Kaylee will call you out at a time.
Call you up.
Up, excuse me.
Yes, I will.
Some days Thursdays aren't good.
Yes. So I have nine comment cards for speakers that requested to speak here in person. And then if we have any additional public comment on Zoom, we'll take them after. So I'm just going to read these in the order I got them. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, so Wade Crandall. Oh, you know what?
I'm sorry, Kaylee. I didn't hear that exchange.
My apologies. These are all for the next item.
Oh.
The property right across the street. But I did have a couple of folks who's... Yep, most of them have REZ 21-007. You can speak at any time. You can speak at any time. Sure. Would you state it into the microphone, please?
Bring it on down, please, sir.
Tim Welty, yeah, forgive me, 55 years ago, these things worked pretty good. I left my hearing about 10,000 miles from here, so. Anyway, this is right now in our backyard. Ours is Steve's here. We've lived there 22, 23 years. So we've seen the good, bad, and the ugly on Willow Creek Road. It's not, it's pretty ugly now. Now the speed is between, I've clocked it down, 55 to 70 miles an hour. Probably average is 60. The distance between Pinion Oaks Drive and the intersection of Pioneer Parkway is 750 feet, which if you look on the map she had up there, it's not very far. Is there any other place around Arizona that you know of that has a roundabout so close to a major growing intersection? Pretty close, isn't it? And some of the facts are, if you're going 60 miles an hour, you're traveling 88 feet a second. And that's 8.52 seconds from Pioneer Parkway to Pinion Oaks Drive. Now it's time. In good weather, your braking deceleration is 172 feet, and you see a hazard in front of you, you add 132 feet more. So that comes up to 304 feet of braking. Now you get into rain, that doubles the distances, braking distances. And if you get into snow or bad visibility, the braking distance goes up tenfold. These are all DOT stats, okay?
Excuse me, I think you mean the braking distance goes down, right? You said the braking distance goes up with snow. You mean it goes down with snow.
No, excuse me, it goes up with snow tenfold. I'm sorry. That's DOT.
Oh, yes, okay, thanks.
Bad visibility and snow, okay. Consider somebody's coming north, and we see them all the time from Chino, and they want to make, beat that red light, so they run that yellow, put on the accelerator. So trying to get it on the other side, who knows what their speed is going to be. If the roundabout and the project is approved, how would that go in sequence? Will it be the roundabout and the development, or the development and then the roundabout, or both at the same time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification for everyone here, there has not been a traffic impact analysis, and there's not been a determination that a roundabout would be there. There are other types of configurations that could occur to that intersection to improve safety that wouldn't necessarily change it to something other than the current intersection. So that's why we need the traffic impact analysis before any development occurs.
Okay. Kaylee, next?
I realize I need to set a three-minute timer for speakers.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm debating whether I use these speaker request cards because they were filled out from the next item of them, or if you folks would like to speak now. You're all about this. Okay, so I'm just going to keep going through them. Chuck Taubman?
No, sir, you don't have to speak. If you want to talk about the next item, that's fine. If you want to talk about this one, it's fine.
Please go to the platform.
My name is Chuck Taubman. I live on Dandelion Place 1113 Dandelion. Most of us are here for both of the zoning requests. The, the problem has to do mostly with the traffic that'll, that is currently going on in that area. The traffic analysis was from 2017, is that correct, George?
The traffic, the traffic count was from 2017.
2017. Since that time, you've had the, the Deepwell Development go in, and the traffic there has picked up significantly. I mean, it's really, really busy. When I come out on Pinion Oaks Drive to make a left-hand turn, it takes sometimes one to two cycles before I can get out safely. And then to make it even worse, the, the way the, the road is structured from the south, you don't see the cars coming up until they're right on top of you because of the topology. They, they're coming up a little hill, and then all of a sudden, they show up. And the city has been doing some great work. I saw a number of motorcycle policemen out there the other day stopping people because, as Jim said, the traffic there, 45, forget it. There's no way. They're doing 50 and 60. And on top of that, when and if that hospital goes in, the traffic from the south is going to pick up significantly. Both of these developments have, the way they're set up, are going to discharge on the Pinion Oaks Drive, which means the traffic is going to increase significantly trying to get out onto Willow Creek Road. Because with that development, there's only two entrances and exits. We should be thankful because the north side's only got one, but let's not go there. My concern is traffic. I have lived there since 2015. I have seen a number of accidents at that intersection already, and the traffic is increasing tremendously. And the, the mini storage probably won't put a lot of people on the road, but the other developments will. Both this commercial building, depending on what they use it for.
Time is up.
And how much longer have I got?
That's time.
And the one to the north is going to be worse.
Thank you, sir.
Stan? Sir, I'm sorry, I do have a question, and maybe I can ask you to address it, or anybody else to address it. Have you found, when you come up, if you could talk about, have you found that you changed your individual traffic pattern, meaning you're not going to, you don't exit on Willow Creek Road? Do you find yourself more going on Pioneer Parkway? I'd just like to know that little bit of information. Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, a lot of times I won't, I won't take the, the chance of trying to make a left on Willow Creek. It's down to Symphony, just farther, but it's safer. And even my neighbor across the street got in a T-bone out there not too long ago. So it, it, like the gentleman says here, it, it is really tremendously picked up. And to have a roundabout in that shorter distance, boy, coming down from the north down to the south, man, thank you.
And so Symphony is the road you would exit on, and that, onto Pioneer Parkway?
Yeah, it's drive to Symphony. Right turn on to Pioneer Parkway, then right turn back on Willow Creek Road.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Could you please come up to the podium?
And I agree with Jim. I am starting to do the same thing and change my patterns. But the, the problem is, as we divert our pattern and we start going through the community, we're increasing the, the traffic within the community tremendously. I mean, coming down Pinion Oaks Drive, it's becoming almost a thoroughfare.
Okay, we'll continue with the comment cards. Steve Antle?
Steve Antle, 51, or 57, 51 on Pinion Oaks Drive. I live on Honeysuckle Road, right next to Tim. And basically, you know, the traffic, I'm just going to say ditto to what's been said. The traffic is terrible. It's probably 30,000 some odd cars now, if not more. And you had mentioned their alternatives to a roundabout. I would like to hear what those are. And I don't see how anybody here can vote for changing the zoning until they do the traffic study. We have no idea to change the zoning just because their investors want it and want to recoup a couple million dollars on these properties. That's fine. I'm an accountant. But we need to know what we're doing before we do it. And right now, we don't know anything because they haven't even presented the traffic study or showed up here today. So I mean, I don't see any sense of changing the zoning until we have all the information. The most critical that's being said by everybody is traffic. And we're not even talking about the hospital that's going to go in at some point in time, although I'm not sure it's going to reflect us from the, you know, the traffic coming up from Prescott's going to affect our area. But certainly anything that's coming over from Chino Valley or Prescott Valley, you know, it's, the left-hand turns there off of 89A is tremendous every morning. And it's getting worse because of the building that's going on, and it's just going to continue. So I think the main problem here is, how can we, or how can you make any decision without a traffic study? It's impossible because it's terrible right now. And until we know the effects of what's going to happen and what their plans are, we don't know. And also, I don't know, do they really need a two-story uh, a storage area or not? I, I prefer to having a one and rather than ruining the views that the people bought view lots for at one time and changing.
Thirty seconds?
What's going on because they want to do it in a retail situation. I think just keep everything to a certain level. And that would have to be part of the plan if they make the change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we continue, Tammy, you want to discuss how the sequence with the traffic survey fits into this whole thing here?
So if, if those rezonings are approved, then they'll go forward with their traffic impact analysis. They'll have to have that done prior to any building permits or engineering permits being issued, so that we know that if there's going to be additional improvements required off-site. So as they're bringing the utilities in, they'll have to do any other required off-site improvements at that time, before they start developing the properties.
From a chicken and egg discussion, are you saying you can't, you won't, can't or won't do the traffic study until we've made a decision on zoning, or can they do the traffic study as a condition of zoning?
Well, once the zoning is approved, it's approved. So we can't add any additional conditions, except in substantial conformance. That's just something that will happen automatically is that they won't be able to do any improvements on the property. We won't issue any of the building permits. Until they have the engineering permit, and as part of the engineering permit, they'll have to do the traffic impact analysis. We did ask, the traffic, our traffic engineer did ask them to do a traffic impact analysis to kind of see what preliminarily may be required in this area. And we never, we did not get one. But they are required for the permits as it moves forward. So they will not be able to put any structures on the property until the traffic impact analysis is done and approved by our city engineer. They'll have to do those improvements prior to building the uses on the property pending the outcome of the traffic impact analysis.
Any questions of Tammy? Thank you. Before we continue with public comment, we will continue on this, too. Please be advised that there is a three-minute time limit. We like to have enough time for everybody to be able to speak. And if someone has already presented what you want to present, we have a fairly good memory of what people are telling us already. And being told again doesn't necessarily increase our memory on that there. So Kaylee?
Okay, Robert Stockbridge?
Robert Stockbridge, 5750 Golden Rod Way. And I will tell you that in the last three years, traffic has tripled or better on Willow Creek Road. It's become so bad that two days ago, the police chief increased all of the patrols and everything because of the accidents that are happening and because of the traffic conditions that we have. You mentioned that a light is not sufficient at that corner. And for me, a roundabout is kind of silly because of the distance from 89A to, to, to the opening, the, it would, it would be, and we know that these people are going to, whatever the plan may be, they have to have, submit once it's done. They're going to do the cheapest thing that they can get away with, not the best thing for the 640 homes that they're going to interrupt by being there. The original plan for RE, whatever it was, residential, was part of the reason why we bought homes there. We didn't buy because we wanted strip malls to back up to our homes. It's unbelievable the amount of traffic that's coming. They have a double left turn lane off of 89A onto Willow Creek. Willow Creek is only a two-lane road. That has to tell you something. There is no way to expand Willow Creek out and make it three or four lanes to relieve any of that process. So that's off the table right away. For the council, it comes down to, do we need to have whoever the applicants are, make a lot of money at the cost of the residents who have been here for all those years? It, it's, it's really that simple. They're going to make money, and, and these increased things, if, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but we, we have pretty bad accidents. I told my wife the other day when I came back, I said, there was an accident at the corner, and you can't tell what make a vehicle was one of the ones that was in the accident. That's how bad it was. So the whole thing comes down to, are we going to make somebody else rich? If they really want to be there, I understand the traffic is wonderful. Why not have them on the commercial side?
Time is up.
Already available.
Thank you, sir. Kaylee?
Robbie Graves?
Robbie Graves, I'm at 845 Panicum Drive there in Pinion Oaks. I'm going to do this real quick because it has been talked about. But this is all being done bass ackwards. I mean, why would you, why would you not find out traffic problems before you start going into trying to rezone? And why do you go into rezoning when it was, it was being put up for sale as a rural? Then they buy the property, and then they tried to go in and rezone it. That should all be put up front before it even was sold. Yeah, property was bought as a rural, and now they're trying to do a business general. Once they, once you rezone that, now you're going to open up the, the door. I mean, it could be a list of all different kinds of things that start going in there, that it's going to be having traffic trying to get into there. Trying to come in on to Pinion Oaks, a residential street? I went to the first meeting. The first meeting, we had a plan, and I'm sorry I didn't, I think to bring it. You, you can't bring traffic in on to Pinion Oaks to get in, to get in and out of businesses on both sides. They're wanting from that Dunkin' Donuts thing with the strip mall to the other side, having people coming in off of Willow Creek onto Pinion Oaks and then going into those businesses? It's, that's crazy. It's not even, and as they said, Deepwell Ranch, the Dells has been built there, Walden Farms is built there. That's, the traffic is multiplying tremendously. And it's, and Deepwell is not even done. I mean, I don't even know if they're even halfway through. So first thing needs to be done is a traffic analysis. And that should be done before anything gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, as a reminder, we're looking for new things that haven't been talked about already. We're aware of the traffic questions and so forth on that. So would appreciate new items for us to have consideration of, okay?
I have a, I have a question, just for clarification. Has the applicant actually purchased the, the property yet?
No, they have not. Both of the properties are still hold, held by the same property owners. So this is in, probably part of their escrow is going through the rezoning, which is pretty common, that we see that all the time.
Excuse me, I, I have a question for George. George, how many units is projected for Deepwell Ranch? Do you know off the top?
In, in theory, 10,000.
10,000. How many?
In practicality, it would be well less than that, but in theory, 10,000.
What portion is built right now, do you know? Give, give or take?
300?
300?
In, in Deepwell itself, yeah. It's a very small percentage so far.
Thank you.
Okay, Constance Ricks?
I won't repeat what has been said.
Oh, we need name and address first.
Constance Ricks, 985 Pinion Oak Drive.
Thank you.
I won't repeat what has been said, but please don't open door A because of door B needing to be done. So please don't rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Luann Van Gundy?
Sorry, he's got a lot to say. Good morning. I'm Luann Van Gundy, 5981 Honeysuckle. I'm the one who's going to be affected by Dunkin' Donuts because they're right in our backyard. I've invited them to come stand in our backyard. He asked me to come into Prescott Valley, see what he's got over there. We did. He never came to my house. So I, I don't need a fast food restaurant with a squat box ordering donuts at 6 o'clock in the morning with their coffee. It's really bad. And he goes, oh, we're going to put a buffer. I go, really? Really? 6 o'clock in the morning? Lights coming into our bedroom window? My dog's having coronaries because somebody's back there? It's, it's not good. And then, like everybody else said, the traffic is hideous. I sit there and listen to horrible accidents out on Pinion Oak and Willow Creek. It's bad. So that's all I've got. It's just take it for what it's worth, guys. Come in my backyard, you're all welcome, and see if you want that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jerry Rook?
Good morning. Jerry Rook, 1030 Panicum Drive in Pinion Oaks. In addition to everything that's been said, which I agree with, just some examples. On Willow Creek, that area that was marked business, regional, a landscaping company came in there, backs up to Pinion Oaks on Golden Rod, and the very first. And the very first thing that that landscaping company did was put porta pots up against the block wall fence of the Pinion, of the Pinion Oaks home. So we've got that kind of thing. I also looked at some other possible businesses that if, if it is rezoned into business, general. There's 40, 40 of them that I found that are permitted uses, including automobile, major and minor repair, automobile sales, motorcycle rentals, farm equipment and supplies, manufactured home sales, vehicle sales, funeral establishments, mini warehouses, restaurants, lounges, bars. These, these are not what we want in our premier housing development. And when we moved here in 2013, of course, Pinion Oaks was pretty much developed by then. But we saw the perimeter and we looked it up online. And we saw and were very content with, it's not going to be commercial. It was, it was rated rural estate, two acres. So we felt very comfortable with that. And when, when the city says things like, our intention has been all along to make it commercial, that's kind of bothersome. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No more comment cards, we just have one for the next item. We, we do have one speaker on Zoom. We do have one speaker on Zoom. William Ray, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for calling on me. My name is William Ray. Address is 5660 4 o'clock Lane in Pinion Oaks. And I won't repeat the issues of the traffic, but I wanted to mention that if this is going to be a Dunkin' Donuts commercial operation, I think the business hours are important to note. I saw that the Dunkin' Donuts in PV is open at 4:30 in the morning on weekdays and 5:00 AM on Sundays. And I just don't think that that kind of commercial traffic should be brought in on Pinion Oaks Drive. You know, if they could figure out some other entrance and exit to that business, that might satisfy the residents a little bit. But the next door neighbors are going to be affected by that early morning traffic as these people in the Deepwell Ranch, that hasn't even, the, the volume of that traffic hasn't even been realized yet. They're not even done building these houses. As people come in and stop for coffee on their way to way into town as early as 4:30 in the morning on weekdays, I think that's going to negatively affect the residents here. And so I'd ask the council to not rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
No. Yeah, we have Allison. You can unmute yourself. Allison? You can unmute yourself, there you go.
Yes, I was trying to do that. Thank you, my name is Allison Sabah and I live on, I live on 5825 Golden Rod Way. I've been there for 21 years. And of course, I have all the same concerns. I did, my question also was, what are the hours of the storage unit? Is it a 24-hour facility that they can come and go?
And that was not part of the request, we're just looking at the site plan at this time.
Okay, so my concern also with the Dunkin' Donuts is the hours of operation. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, Tammy?
Anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. Oh, here we have. Donna McCrossan, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for taking, taking my, let me speak. Okay, we've addressed the traffic thing.
Ma'am, please identify yourself and address.
I'm sorry?
Your, your address?
Name and address.
Sorry, 1037 Panicam Drive in Pinion Oaks.
Thank you.
Okay, we've talked about the traffic. But the gentleman just said in Deepwell Ranch, we've got like 300 homes already and he's saying it can handle 10,000. Are you kidding me? I mean, there'll be a freeway out here next to say nothing about the additional building they're going to do off of, on the other side of, of Pinion Oaks on, on Pioneer Parkway. And so I have, my concerns are all the same thing. We're going to find ourselves right in the middle of a lot of industrial or commercial buildings. So that's my concern. On top of everything else, everybody else has stated. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would anyone else like to speak off from Zoom? No, their hands are being raised.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments that you made here. This is what the commission likes to have come forth so we understand what the public's thoughts are. To be honest, I am disappointed that the applicant isn't here to answer questions. And I don't feel comfortable even voting on something when the applicant doesn't show up on that. So I don't know about other commission members.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Ted?
I also would like to commend the residents of Pinion Oaks. We've had a few previous meetings where the resident groups have attempted to steamroll the, the planning commissioners, but you've been very civil, so I want to thank you for that. Couple of things I wanted to share with you and then what, if I may, I'd like to make a motion. This area probably should be rezoned. There's, there's no one's going to build a two-acre property on Willow Creek. I also think it's important that we not attempt to impugn the intent or the character of the developer. Now, developer's not here, we can't question him. But, but our job as commissioners is to evaluate what's in front of us and not guess ulterior motives. We have three options. We can either vote to approve, we could vote to reject it. As, as a point of order, we, we're, right now, we're looking at REZ 21008, correct?
Correct, only.
Only. But the, but the comments have applied to, to both of these. So do we need to vote on these individually or we have to vote on them individually? Okay, therefore.
Before you make a motion, I'd like to allow the commissioners to make.
Sure, well then why don't we open up for, yeah, okay.
I'll come back. Any other commissioners like to make a comment before we make a motion?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison.
Just a minute, sir. Do you want to make a comment? No, this is only, we take one item at a time.
These are both public hearings, they're going to go through the same process that we just went through. I understand, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Don. I digested this package over the last couple of days and, and I walked in here this morning deeply concerned about traffic. And where I came out was, after listening to the folks here, is that there's too much traffic, number one, and it's moving way too fast, number two. Did I get that right? Yeah. So to me, that equals a, a safety concern. And we'd be remiss, I think, if, if, if we entertain the idea of approving this without knowing what that really means. So that a traffic analysis in my mind is absolutely critical. But I also agree that this property will get rezoned and it will be used sooner or later. But for us to move forward without having, again, meat on the bones would be a mistake.
Okay, any other commissioners want to make, stand?
I do, Don, yeah. So I agree based off of the general plan and knowing that, that's going to be, we've looked at this being a commercial area. There, there are some, some items that, that we do need more information on. One is obviously the traffic analysis or impact analysis. The reason that I asked the, the residents to talk about have they changed up their traffic pattern based off of, based off of the traffic is because, you know, I, I exited that area as I researched the, the location and I had to make a left-hand turn and it was, I mean, it was very dangerous. Very understanding. And there is also a median, there's a concrete median right there. So there's not a lot of room. The, when we do the traffic impact analysis, I would just encourage the staff or whoever, whenever we do the planning to potentially make this, this is a residential neighborhood now, looking at a, even closing off that exit and only allowing emergency vehicles only, right? As an emergency egress or ingress for various reasons. That, and then I would ask any applicants that does move forward to then develop a plan that does not include an exit or entrance from the Pinion Oaks area, but on the actual road, main thoroughfares. So, and the other piece too is, I wrote down, just if there are some items that are, if we look at a commercial area, that's not necessarily business general, but other options zoning within the commercial realm. And those are just some area, you know, some options that we really need to look at and applicants in the future really need to look at. So again, I see that this goes commercial, but let's make sure that it's a commercial entity that really helps out that neighborhood, but also provides really what residents need in the area. We see that there is zero commercial that's even popped up around there and that times have been changing and we know it's going to happen. So those are my comments.
Okay, Stan. Tammy, clarification thing. Does the city do the traffic analysis or is the applicant responsible for doing the traffic analysis?
The applicants are responsible and then we, we give, the city has input. So it'll be handed over to, because ADOT will be part of this too and the county too, because Pioneer Parkway is overseen by the county. So we have three, the ADOT, the city and the county all giving input into this traffic impact analysis. So an option for you, you could also defer the application until a TIA is done.
Okay. Any other comments? Ted, do you want to go ahead and make a motion then?
I would like to make a motion, as I mentioned to, as I mentioned to the public earlier, we have three options. We can approve it, we can turn it down, or we can table it. And I'm going to move that on REZ 21-008, that we table the motion for the following additional, and I have to be specific about what information is needed. We'd like to see a traffic study. I think we owe it to the residents of Pinion Oaks. I'd also like to see uses. The one resident identified a number of uses. You missed the fact that you can also put a circus out there temporarily. And the developer's not here. So I think it's only fair that we table the motion for those three reasons and I would be open to any other commissioners that have any other conditions for tabling the motion.
Stan?
Yeah, yeah, I fully agree with the motion. One item I'd like to ask is just for us to publicly list the commercial zoning options that are available as well.
How would you like us to list that? So all of the, all of the permitted uses in all of our zoning categories are available in the city's land development code and those are, that's available online. I also gave you copies of the, the list itself. We can make those available to anyone who requests them, if that's one way to do it.
I'd like to clarify something. Usually when we receive a site plan in for a rezoning, the site plan states what's going to be on there, i.e. a mini storage, an office building. And we can approve or disapprove based upon the site plan. So if the site plan is approved with the office building and a mini storage, then that's what has to be there unless they come back to us. If a site plan is approved with a, one occupant on there and nothing on the rest, that leaves the rest of it wide open for whatever is under business general. Am I correct in that?
That's correct and we will discuss that with the second item.
Right. So the two are somewhat different on the, yes, they're asking for the same rezoning, but the site plans are different submissions for each one.
Yeah, and I see that's, that's a very, very valid point. And as long as the site plan, we're approving also that comprehensive site plan when we're doing the approval. I just, my point was not just rezoning it business general without any type of site plan. But if that's what we, our intent is, then, then I think that we're good with the motion as it stands.
Did you want to second the motion then or?
I would actually, I would like to second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion on this item, Tom?
Yeah, Ted, would you repeat the motion?
I move the table REZ 21-008, requesting the following information. One, that we have completed the traffic study. Two, that we understand the use of the property. And three, that the developer be here to answer any questions. So there's three conditions.
Okay. Kaylee, would you call the role players?
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Ted Gamboji?
Yeah.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion to table passes 6-0.
Now, just for your information, that means we're going to be transferring this down the road to another meeting. It'll be publicized on when that meeting will be, so you need to check the city website. These are, this is additional information we're looking for on this. You are invited to come back to that meeting. If you'd like to come back to it, if you feel that you've presented your thoughts concerning this, we will remember this. I hope we remember this. And so if you have any questions on it, let me know. But this is how the proceeding will work on this. Any other questions on that particular part?
It's probably down, down the road question, but we didn't even know what the grade is going to be there. You know, one part of, of Willow Creek Road there, it's 10-foot high and then it goes down to the corner of Pinion Oaks Drive and Willow Creek Road to nothing. But we don't even know what the grade is going to be.
This is the reason we want to have the applicant here to answer questions like that. That's something we can't answer ourself. Okay, sir. It's not your honor. But I'll give you the quarter later, okay? Do you want to make a comment? We've already voted on this and it's going to be deferred. It doesn't mean no, it just means that we want more information before we can make a decision.
And Mr. Chairman, because, because you had a specific request for the traffic impact analysis to be completed and back with results to you, there's no reason to have a date certain, but that also leaves the date uncertain. When or if the traffic impact analysis is completed, we will reschedule this and renotice the neighborhood like we did this time.
What, basically, unless there's a traffic analysis done, it's not going to be scheduled again.
That's basically the way your motion set the table.
Right.
Question for George.
Sir?
Is this time bounded? How much time does the developer get to do this? Is that up to us? And should we, it, it time bound it?
It could be up to you. I can tell you, traffic impact analyses can take weeks, months or years, depending on how busy traffic engineers are, because that's who will do the study, a private traffic engineer. Everything is developing right now. There's a lot of development going on. Engineers are busy. It could be months away before we're back in touch with you about this.
That's troubling to me. It seems like we need to put the developer's feet to the fire here.
Well, Tom, it's up to him to do this. If he doesn't do it, If he doesn't do it, that's his choice. For us to put a timeframe on it, we have, they, when applicant applies, they have to pay a fee to apply. How long a timeframe? Is there any timeframe of that or not?
Not specifically. If something is still in motion with a project, we generally leave the project alive. If it's pretty obvious the project is dead, then we will close the project out and you won't see it again. It'll require a new application, a new applicant to bring it back into the public realm.
And this is, this is going to force the applicant to make a determination as to whether he wants to voluntarily go forward. Now, the time limits in the code are applicable to the city council, that if the council doesn't act within 60 days of a rezoning hearing, then it's deemed a denial. But there's no similar timeline in the land development code for the planning and zoning commission.
And I would caution, putting an arbitrary timeframe on it could prevent a traffic impact analysis that could, in the long run, actually benefit the neighborhood, because that traffic impact analysis should look for any ways to mitigate the current problems that they're having with access onto and off of Willow Creek Road.
Maybe. But. Excuse me, George, it's Butch Tracy. Is there a, is there a cost for this analysis?
Absolutely.
Any idea what?
No idea.
I, I don't, I've never ordered one myself.
Okay, is there any scenario where the, the city of Prescott would initiate that and, and have it? I mean, this looks like a corridor problem. It looks like a lot more than just, you know, just what we're talking about here.
We, we do regular.
We just did one south of Prescott.
Sorry, you have to tell us your name and your dress.
Jason Ricky, 14624, south 179th Avenue, Goodyear, Arizona. Applicant for the next one, but we just did a traffic study south of here for the other Dunkin', which you guys approved and it's being constructed. It was about $20,000, takes about a month and a half.
Thank you.
It's actually less than I thought it would be.
Yeah. All right, we're going to be moving on to the next item here. And the next item is REZ 21-007, property owner Granite Property Investments LLC, applicant Bar Napkin Productions, a request for rezoning from RE 2 acre, rural estate 2 acre, to BG Business General to allow for a new drive-through restaurant on APN 106-02-052D at 5930 Willow Creek Road. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very similar request. It's a request for a rezoning from the RE 2 acre to Business General. It is to allow a commercial development of a portion of the property. Location, we're all very well aware of it. It's the north side of the access road into Pinion Oaks. It is a relatively level site compared to the south side. The south side has an elevation change as you head further south. This is relatively flat. It does currently have a small building that's associated with, I believe, a retail, probably a Realtor's site for Pinion Oaks at one time, at the very south edge of the property. That property is part of this. It's the same ownership and would be incorporated into, to any development of the overall site. Just to show you the regional zoning, business regional across the street. To the north is Deepwell Ranch, that sort of orange or gold color is a special planned communities zoning, which allows for, as you know, a complicated list of permitted uses. South, again, primarily commercial zoning. Along this strip of the roadway, the RE 2 acre is, remains in place. The site plan that was provided with this application indicates only the northern third of the property in development. It is for a fast food restaurant type operation. This is the type of operation that generally locates along high-volume roadways. It doesn't, they're not really a destination location typically. They, they borrow the traffic off the road that's already there rather than create traffic themselves. But in this case, the original site plan indicated a potential for a right-in off of eastbound traffic on Pioneer Parkway. We don't believe the county will approve that, but that's something the county will have to resolve. They're also showing a right-in, right-out operation that potentially could be changed to a right-in and full access operation that would, that would be at the, approximately the, roughly the center point between Pioneer Parkway and Pinion Oaks Drive. That driveway access is aligned just north, for those folks who know the area well, just north of the raised median. So there's a point where the raised median ends and this driveway would be just north of that. That would be something that obviously we're interested in a traffic impact analysis for this site as we were for the other, for the same reasons. Any type of driveway access in close proximity to Pioneer Parkway with the volume of traffic that goes through that intersection in all different directions is something that triggers warning signals for our traffic engineering department. They want to know what the impacts are going to be of this development and the potential development on the remainder of the site, as well as any possible mitigation to dangers that these, these new developments could create or to reduce traffic impacts on adjacent properties. So that's something that we've looked at. The actual site layout for the development is very standard. It's a building in the middle. It has drive-through lanes around it, is more than sufficient parking based on the square footage of the building shown on site. The bigger issues are going to be potential uses of the remainder of the site. You can see the, get the mouse to show up here. This was the potential or is the potential for a right-in off of Pioneer Parkway. Again, that will be subject to the county as they retain jurisdiction over Pioneer Parkway, not the city of Prescott. And then this intersection would be the one that could either be right-in, right-out or potentially have full access at Willow Creek Road. The volume of traffic in this particular, particular section of Willow Creek Road is very high. There's no doubt about the concerns there and our traffic engineering department has requested the traffic impact analysis for this design specifically, but to also look for additional potential. One of the additional potential options would be not to put traffic slowing or entering here closer to the intersection, but to put it down here. And that would take traffic off of Willow Creek Road onto a short segment of Pinion Oaks Drive to get into this site. The responsibility for handling mitigation for such a change in traffic design falls on the developer. So what that might mean is that not just pulling traffic off, but creating a right-turn lane and perhaps another right-turn lane into the property so that traffic going into Pinion Oaks is not blocked by people trying to get into this property. That's something that is, I, just because I've done this for a long time, I know is a possibility. We need traffic engineering. We need the traffic engineer for the city to review the traffic engineering provided by the private engineers in order to make any of those determinations. So everything I've just told you is speculative, but it's all possible. There are concerns on the planning staff's side about the remainder of the site not having any type of development shown on it as we saw on the other. Typically with a rezoning, if we don't know what's going to go in there, the city has been reluctant, at least in the 21 years I've been here, have been very reluctant to rezone property just to increase the value of the property without knowing what's going in and what impacts it could cause on adjacent properties. So you'll note, I called that out on the staff report as a concern. Usually we see a more comprehensive, at least conceptual, site plan that shows what uses could or should go in there. Rezonings generally have a conceptual, a conformance with conceptual site plan condition in them. That's a typical thing that comes out of this body and it's a typical thing the city council will place on rezonings as well. That gives some assurance to adjacent property owners of what types of uses, maybe not individually. It may be a dentist or it may be a different type of medical use. It could be any, any number of the uses that are listed in our table for a commercial that could go into a location. But generally, if you know what the site design looks like, you're limiting those uses. You're not going to show an office building and then put an auto dealership. That's not in substantial conformance. So again, our concerns with this one are primarily with the vacant area and the access, again, traffic impact analysis. Synopsis of what I just said, the unknown 2/3 of the property is a concern. We generally don't rezone without knowing what's going to go on the property, at least in a conceptual manner. That's something that's been well established with the city. And the need for traffic engineering, absolutely. We know the volume of traffic there. I will point out that the volume of traffic at that intersection is a driver for business types like this to locate there. You put a fast food restaurant on a high-volume road, they don't go anywhere else. So that's not unexpected. Something will happen with the site, as you noted, at some point in the future. We just want to make sure through our processes, both at city staff level and at planning commission level, that the safety of the existing development is taken into account. The, the safety of future users of the commercial sites are taken into account. And to do that, traffic engineering is absolutely necessary. We left you several possible motions up here. I think you have basically established the same possible motions for the previous one, so you have options there. We do have the applicant here who may be able to fill you in on some additional information that we don't have at this point. And certainly I'm happy to take any questions you have for staff.
Thank you, George. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a question for George. George, are there acceptance standards, acceptance criteria for a traffic study?
Yes. A traffic engineer doing a traffic study has to coordinate with the city's traffic engineer to make sure that they agree on the parameters of the study. How far out do they look and for what do they look? Do they look at interchanges? Do they look at everything in the immediate area? And that's something that's established before the study is done.
So, so our traffic engineers would establish that scope?
Correct. We, we negotiate a scope with them and it's an agreement on the city's side before they proceed with the study.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Jason Ricky, Bar Napkin Productions, business address 2828 North Central Avenue, Suite 1300, Phoenix. Do you need my personal address too? I gave that earlier.
No, the business address is fine.
Thank you both. You guys did a great job of presenting this, not just on this one, but previous one and all the background. I didn't know all that background either, on the, the general plan stuff from 2000, 2015, so all good to know. I've heard their comments as well. I'm in a similar situation at my own personal house. I have a view fence behind me. The, the people when I bought the house said, it's going to be residential. Lo and behold, they built a community center behind me. I have no recourse because, again, they told me, nobody could build behind me because it's a wash. The wash is only a certain amount of my space behind my building. Then there's other properties, there's other stuff, you know, down the street. They've got lights blinding my house and stuff, so I feel you. I have the same problem. Anyway. We designed a Dunkin' Donuts south of here as well, down Prescott, or on Willow Creek, actually. It's about, I don't know, a few miles south of here. Traffic's a problem. We had to do a traffic study. The problem here is, this is the much larger site. We know we want to do a Dunkin'. The developer, my client, is available on Zoom and if you need to talk to him, he's available as well. But cart before the horse kind of a deal, it's kind of what some of the residents were saying as well. A traffic study will have to be based on what's going to go in here. If you put in a school, the traffic study will have to address the school. If we put in retail office, which is what our plan is, our traffic study will have to address the, the retail and the office component, not a school. Without getting it zoned, we have no, we don't know what to base it on. It's, it's in all, it's all this hypotheticals like was stated before, anything can go there. We can't even get our, our developers having trouble getting people to be interested to spend their money to do LOIs because they don't know if they can even do a project here. It's been planned to be commercial, which has been stated in the general plan. It's just, at this point, we need to go through the process with the city, planning staff and everybody, to get everyone on the same page and be happy with what we're going to develop here. But we need to get that zoning as the first step in order to make those next steps and, and really develop the whole site plan. Uh, let's see. And then I wanted to clarify what you said, Stan, earlier about off of Pinion Oaks, something about emergency access only. What was that about? Can you explain that?
Yeah, it'd be basically shutting down any access for anybody but emergency vehicles on Willow Creek Road. And so then you'd basically, then the exit would be on Symphony primarily or any other exit along Pioneer Parkway.
Is that for the residential's or for the commercial park going in?
I mean, that's anybody. I mean, it would be a shut down road.
People would be able to use Pinion Oaks Drive.
That's correct. You could only access it through Symphony or other routes coming off of Pioneer Parkway.
Okay. And then just to clarify as well, so we did, we did show the entrance off of Willow Creek there and I, I thought it was in one of the preliminary comments and I, I might be wrong here, but I thought they were talking and are telling us we had to continue the median to prevent it from being a full access. It would only be a right-in, right-out. And we would have to create a right-turn lane, a decel lane essentially for that access point. So it wasn't just going to be coming right off of the main drive lanes, it was going to have to have a new lane created in order to create that access.
Yeah, your plan does have an egress and ingress off of Willow Creek, but the other one did not.
And then I, I don't know what the, I'd have to look back at the codes and say how far apart entrances can be. I, I would assume if we're going to not allow anybody to come in off of Pinion Oaks, I don't know what happens to the storage unit. They don't have any way to get to their site. Again, they're not, that's not our problem. It's, it's a different development, but we would obviously like to have more than one entrance. It just helps with the flow of traffic in the actual site. But again, we don't know what to, it's hard to develop a site plan and we don't know who we can put into the site. So that's really, like I said, it's a difficulty. Cart before the horse thing, and we, we know we have to do a traffic study, but they are not cheap and they take time. And to ask the developer to, who is already spending money on us and, you know, time and they've got their escrow in there and stuff, so to ask somebody to, to do a traffic study when they don't know what they're going to develop is, is hard. Again, we know if we get the zoning, we will have to do the traffic study, we'll have to meet all the zoning requirements, all the LDC requirements. We will do everything we can to make this as good as possible. Because again, the, our developer wants it to be a nice place for people to come. They don't want to make it turn anybody away. So, I don't know. I don't know. Like I said, we develop, we develop a lot of these things. We always go through the same kind of process with the cities and we try to, to be a well, a, a working partner with you guys. You give us comments and we make adjustments to our site plan in order to satisfy you and satisfy the, the neighbors. Anybody that has input, we try to appease them, but at some point we ought to, we all have to, you know, collaborate to make this thing work.
Sir, just to let you know, I've been fortunate enough to be on the planning commission two different times for quite a few years. And we have never approved a rezoning without knowing what's planned to be in there. And without a plan to be in there, it'd be difficult for at least me to support any change in zoning. That's just the one item there.
Understood. I mean, on the devil's advocate's side, somebody told this was going to be, who zoned it to be RE in the first place, RE 2 acre. Somebody just said, make it that. Nobody had a plan for it, but it was just rezoned. Our, and most of the places we go to, there are different steps. We have the zoning, conditional uses, then site plan approvals, all those things. So it takes, we have to go through each one of those one at a time. And this one, it seems like it's all at the same time. Like there is no zoning and then planning for site plan design, all that.
Well, I'm not sure where else you had been and working on this, but in Prescott and the part in the time I've been on the commission here, it has not occurred for a rezoning on, well, here's business general, do what you want to do. If you want business general, this is what I want to do. And the site, it's approved based upon the site plan. If there are a change down the road, then it comes back in.
And we, we understand that too as well, that if we were to make any changes here, we'd have to come back.
But you have no plan for that vacant space.
Again, it's most, we, we're having trouble getting people interested to come. It's most likely, and I think we at one point had presented some other options there of. It's most likely, and I think we at one point had presented some other options there of continuous building of just commercial, 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 commercial offices. I mean, there's options there, but. It's like you said, it's theoretical, it's hypothetical, it's, it's, there's all kinds of options. We just don't know what we can do until we have a zoning that says we can do it.
Any questions of applicant by commission members?
I have a question. It's Butch Tracy, do you, is there another Dunkin' Donuts in the area, Prescott Valley somewhere?
One in Prescott Valley and there's one, like I said, they're building it right now south.
The one you're building, yes, I realize that. Where's the one in Prescott Valley? Thank you very much. Yeah, I just, something to look at, I, I just was curious.
Yeah, this would only be, this is a combo as well, so it'd be the ice cream component with the coffee.
It'd be what, I'm sorry?
A combo store, so it has a Dunkin' and Baskin Robbins, just like the one in Prescott Valley.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, unless you have some additional information you want to present.
The, like I said, my client is on Zoom, he said he would be willing to speak as well.
And we do have a one speaker card for this item. We, we do have the applicant, Neil, you, you're welcome to speak.
Yes, this is Neil Borden. My address is nine Somerset Lane, Edgewater, New Jersey. And I listened to everybody speak today. And the point is that we, we're coming in solely at this point in time to get a rezoning for Dunkin'. And when we go and do a Dunkin', there is, we are totally flexible in our design. We try to be part of the neighborhood, we put in a patio, and we want our Dunkin' to look like the homes that are behind us, if that's what everybody wants. We're not looking to do anything that's going to upset the, the community. Because a lot of those same people will want to come to our Dunkin'. You know, we're obviously a primarily a coffee establishment. And, and so we don't use any uplighting, we only, we, we don't use, we only use LED lights and it's down lighting. And whatever we're asked to by the planning board or planning commission, whether it's buffering and whatever, to whatever extent, to whatever it's net, whatever is necessary to make people feel comfortable with us is what we're willing to do. We're not looking to be adversaries, we're not looking to be difficult. We just don't understand, like for example, a traffic report. We're willing to do a traffic report, but what is the traffic report going to do for us in this case? We want the traffic report to be part of planning, so the people from the city who deal with the traffic tell us what's appropriate. Not people who are not experts, I'm not an expert, the people from Pinion Oaks are not experts. I, I, I know a lot more than many of those people because I've been involved in development in hundreds and hundreds of projects. But I don't know, and I want to do what's necessary to keep the place safe, because that's the only way we do well. And on top of that, if the rest of the property was ever utilized, we would come back and say, what do you think? It would probably be office, maybe a dental office, maybe Aspen Dental, which is a national chain. It may be an urgent care center. We're not looking to build a nightclub that's open all day and all night. I mean, that's farfetched, that's not what we're going to do here, because we destroy our own business, which is Dunkin'. So I'm wearing two hats, I'm a developer, but I'm also the Dunkin' franchisee. And so I want to make everything right for the community. It's not just people coming off the road in traffic, that's only one aspect. I want everybody to enjoy the Dunkin'. And that's what happens in most areas. We're about to build one across from the hospital. And you, what do you think it's going to be? It's going to be people utilizing the hospital, people who are from the general area? It's not going to be people who are just on the road, random people. That's not what we're looking to do. We want to be good neighbors and we want to do the right thing. And, and, and to lump us, and it would be great to talk about the other project where they want to put mini storage. And I have no issue with that, I have no issue what they put in as an application. If they didn't come today, I don't know why, I wish they did, and we can all speak at the same time. But again, I want everybody to be comfortable with us. We want to be, like we're doing another one in Prescott, we did one in Prescott Valley, everybody's happy. We're going to design it again according to the neighborhood, not according to anything where we use the same, we use the same style in every location.
Thank you, sir.
So, that's, that's the way, I, I don't really, so I'm trying to get a grasp of what everybody's saying and looking for. We want to be, we want to be, again, good neighbors and get this, 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 this project moving forward where the people on the planning commission can give us a lot of input.
Thank you, sir. Any question for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Tom Hutcheson here, I'm wondering if you've got a viable business plan if only a Dunkin' Donuts went into that property? I.e., your approval is just for Dunkin' Donuts and the rest of that property stays vacant forever?
We are just fine, sir. We, we, we're right now in Phoenix and many locations. We have in total, as a, as franchisees, we have over a hundred of them, both on the east coast and as well as Arizona. In Arizona, we, we have in, in the thirties. And, and, and we, we can survive whether we develop the balance of the property or we utilize it just for the Dunkin'.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, we appreciate your information on that. Now we'll open it up for public comments. Kaylee, would you?
Yes, I have one comment card for this and then obviously one gentleman raising his hand, so Wade Crandall.
Good morning, I'm Wade Crandall, CMA Realty, located at 615 East Gurley in Prescott, Arizona. I represent along with Patrick Senden, the developer. So, just to give you a little history, January 29th, we had a voluntary public meeting with Pinion Oaks residents at a nearby location. We had about forty or fifty residents come. Neil Borden, as the developer, was there on site along with Patrick and I. And we had very civil discussions, it was, it was a good meeting. We heard several of the comments that we've already heard today, which I'm not going to repeat. But we've been very proactive. Neil's heart, the developer in this, has been, let's be proactive, let's go to the neighborhood. We know this is going to be business eventually, that's been said multiple times by the council and the public understands that. Neil's heart is to, hey, to the public and to the neighbors, what would you like to see here? That was the theme of that meeting over and over and over. And the main comments we heard from the residents was, we do not want a gas station, we do not want a convenience store, we do not want a bar, think, items like that. Neil committed and said, these are, these are things that we do not want either, these are not conducive to our business. We know that we want to do a Dunkin', we know, we will do whatever's required by the city to comply with setbacks, with boundaries for the residents. And Dunkin' or any future business that goes in there is not causing the traffic problem. The traffic problem's already there. By approving this development and approving this zoning, this is going to expedite solving the traffic problems or mitigating the traffic problems that we currently have at this location. It's only going to get worse if this property's not developed, it's going to be delayed that much longer. And so, we've been very proactive, we had a very good meeting. And, you know, we, we understand that change is hard and, but there's got to be a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, will you come up to the podium? State your name.
My name is Chuck Taubman, I live on Dandelion Place 1113. If you look at my sheet, I originally wanted to talk about this and not about the other, but regardless. I am most concerned about putting that Dunkin' right, right there and especially not knowing what's going to go in with the rest of the property. The traffic in that area, as we all talked about, is an issue. And a facility like Dunkin' Donuts where people are coming in early in the morning and even late in the evening, is going to be the ingress and outgress of that area is going to be impossible. There's no way that people are going to be able to come in and out of that area on Willow Creek with the traffic from the north and everybody making left-hand turn. It's, it's just not practical. It's one thing to have a, a set of buildings where you have offices and stuff where there's minimal traffic, but something like a, a fast food facility relies upon people coming constantly. And it's just not going to work. And the other facilities that they mentioned that they're putting in, where there are Dunkins, that was a, a commercial area like the one in Prescott Valley. It's surrounded by the Findlay Convention Center and all the rest of it, all around it. This isn't, this backs up to a quiet neighborhood. And the, the woman who lives right behind it is going to hear at 4:30 in the morning, I want a cup of coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes, come to the podium, please.
I need to speak my name again?
Yes, please.
Robbie Graves, 845.
Bring the mic down further.
Robbie Graves, 845 Panicum Drive in Pinion Oaks. I was at that meeting, I don't quite remember it quite the same way, he, he just disstated it. I think we were one of the first people that came in. The two realtors and the developer were standing there. And I remember asking, you know, wha- what is this all about? Oh, well, we want to know about how the Pinion Oaks people feel. And then that's where the first time we seen the Dunkin' Donuts thing. I said, if you were so concerned about what we felt, why didn't you come to ask us before you already started the, the decision on the, on the Dunkin' Donuts? So, somebody also had brought up about the fact about the hours, because of the lady that's living behind with the drive up. And they said, oh, well, we can, we can work with you on that, we'll work on the people. Well, no, the, you know, the franchise usually opens at 4:30, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. So, there was a little wishy-washiness there. And then as to the man here that explained about the, I think you said six to 700 feet from Pioneer to Pinion Oaks?
750.
750 feet? As they were speaking, you, you think about that speed coming down and all of a sudden they look up and see Dunkin', oh, I think I'd get a donut and a coffee. And then the brakes start's coming on right away to be able to get in. What is that going to do with all the traffic that's coming? I mean, we're going to have rear rims, braking, you know, accidents, it's, it's just not, it's not feasible. And again, to come in off of Pinion Oaks. And then however else you're going to be able to get in there on that 750 feet is just going to be, again, the, the traffic analysis, I, I think will probably, will probably show you, show you that. I think that's, I've got notes all over here, but, oh, when, when you don't have an idea of what it is, you got Dunkin' Donuts, maybe it's going to be a Taco Bell, maybe it's going to be a Chick-fil-A, maybe it's being In-N-Out. Have you ever been by an In-N-Out and seen the backup of an In-N-Out? I mean, think about those places, once you put in one fast food spot, it's going to go, it's, it's just going to grow. Chances are, it's going to be fast food places that go in there. And, and think about what the mess is going to be like at that, at the corner of Pioneer and Willow Creek. It's going to be horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kaylee, anybody else?
Yes, one more.
Tim Welty, 5001 Honeysuckle Road. At the meeting, did you say that north and south are from Dunkin' Donuts down to Pinion Oaks Road to the property lines to the west? That he was going to have a drive, it emptied on the Pinion Oaks Drive?
I have to say that again, I'm sorry.
I thought at the meeting we had, initial meeting we had, behind Dunkin' Donuts, there's, see the dotted line? That was going to be a drive down the Pinion Oaks Drive, wasn't it? I thought Sid was, okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I think that indicates an easement of some kind, like for utilities.
Okay. Anyone else would like to?
Okay, one more.
Steve Antal, 5871 Honeysuckle Road, right on the corner of Pinion Oaks Drive and Honeysuckle Road. And, you know, I, I don't really mind having a storage in behind us as long as it's not built up high and we get into problems of site and. The elevation there, like we talked about, it probably goes up fifteen, 10 to 15 feet towards the church that's going south from Pinion Oaks. It just goes like this. In fact, my house where I live on the corner there, they build it up to where I wasn't on sloping, they build it up straight like that. So I'm up higher, almost up as high as your house right now, but. Really, I, I'm looking at the big picture and looking at the pictures, that big piece of real estate on the east side of Pinion Oaks. Isn't that not commercial, that's a huge piece of, you know what, how many acres that is by any chance?
I don't recall the acres.
Hold on.
I don't recall the acres.
Okay. But it looks like to me you'd put a retail establishment in there that would look like the Fries scenario that they're doing down there, you know, that we go to all the time. And I see that size of a unit going in on the east side of Pinion Oaks if you approve it. So what's going to happen five years from now with that whole damn area on a piece of real estate that's on the west side of Willow Creek Road, that is in really a crappy retail location? I don't care what anybody says, the gentleman said it'll help improve the traffic. How can creating more obstacles to a freeway helps traffic? I don't understand the comment. And the argument was they were going to have an ingress, an egress off of Pinion Oaks. And everybody there, those forty, fifty people, everyone was against having any kind of access off of Pinion Oaks Drive. There are only two, like stated, two ingresses, egresses. I don't want to go down to Symphony and take a right and take another right, go through the light. Instead of getting out on Pinion Oaks Drive where I'm a block and a half away to go to Fries. Why do I have to do that? Why do I have to be imperiled of doing something else? What's going to happen five, six years from now when that hospital gets built? And they want to develop that east side property that's, we're dealing with property that's really a buffer zone to a nice residential area rather than a, a zone for commercial use. It's crazy. And with what's there now, and five, 300, three or 500 houses in Deepwell now, and they, they scheduled 10,000. With the growth of Prescott, we know that's going to get filled out to nine, 10,000. And I think we need to look at the future, not just today.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to make a comment?
I believe that's all. Do we have anyone on Zoom, George? Okay.
Okay. Any commission members want to make a comment before we go on to the possible motion? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes, George.
So we, we've, we've given you options for motions, but one thing that came up during the discussion occurred to me that one of the circumstances that we have concerns about is the potential of rezoning a chunk of property without having an idea of what could go on to that property. It wouldn't necessarily address a situation associated with traffic, but if the applicant's rezoning application were constrained to the area they have a site plan for, leaving the remainder RE two acre for now, for future. leaving the remainder RE two acre for now, for future rezoning, when they find out what they want to do with it, would be one option that they have. I'm not saying that would be a, a motion on your side. That's an option that the applicants have. They could reduce, they could reduce, they could reduce the area that they're proposing for rezoning to the area that they have a known user and site plan for. Again, following our pattern in Prescott, where our determination of which is the cart and which is the horse is that we want to know what you're going to build first. That's the horse. The rezoning is the cart. It's an option for them to think about. I, again, I don't believe you would incorporate that into a motion.
Right. Butch.
Yeah, George Butch Tracy. Do you, what is the distance from that intersection to their, to their proposed drive in there? Do you, do you know what that is? I mean, I was, I was kind of confused on that, what I was seeing.
Believe it's about, do you have a specific number?
Around 300.
300 feet.
And how far is it from the, the actual building to the residence, to the nearest resident?
That would be approximately 60 feet.
Thank you. And is there a, a noise study? You know, they were talking about the, the, somebody ordering coffee at 4 o'clock in the morning. You know, I've, I've heard that. I remember in the eighties on, on Pleasant Street hearing Jack in a Box. And, you know, I'm sure there's other ordinances now maybe hold that down, but, but it was, it was quite disrupting, you know, at, at midnight or whatever that that was going on. So is there a study that's done that way?
We don't have a specific study on noise for that purpose. We do have requirements built into the code to add additional buffering that helps reduce noise. Walls and thicker landscaping reduce noise. Location of order boxes and things like that are something that we work with the developer on so that those are away from the, the property and facing away from the property so that you don't get the, the tinny voice that comes out of the speaker into your window at 4 o'clock in the morning. It would be likely on the north side of the building, just given the flow of traffic around the building, and likely facing away from the neighborhood because of that flow of traffic.
So it is something that's taken in consideration.
We do look at it as part of the site plan approval.
Thank you, George.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Tom Hutchison here. I move to recommend denial of rezoning REZ 21-007 based on the incompleteness of the, of a traffic study and number two, the blank check idea of not knowing what's going to happen on the rest of that property.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion? If there's no second, the motion dies because of no second on that. Is there another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table REZ 21-07 pending a traffic study and a more defin- more definitive use of, of that site pla- yeah, site plan. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second that.
All right, we had a motion and a second on it. Kaylee, will you call the roll, please?
Stan Galagoski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Ted Gambogi?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion to table passes 5-1.
Now for the applicant, are you, do you understand what we're looking for here? Okay. All righty. Is there any additional information from staff, updates or anything?
Um, yes, Tammy Duette, planner. So we did, we did provide to you guys a calendar for next year's meetings. Usually the week of Thanksgiving, which is usually when our last, our meetings are, we usually cancel those meetings. So for next month, we'll get back to you in the next week or so in regards to if we have any applications. Our next meeting would be on a Wednesday, the day before Veterans Day, because Veterans Day is on a Thursday this year. So that's the second week of the month when we usually have our meetings. So we did have it on our calendar for, as a tentative date, and we'll let you know if we have any applications tomorrow moving forward to see if we can get a quorum to make sure before moving forward. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a meeting till December, so.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I want to thank your members who, well, public who attended here. This is what we have these meetings for, to get input, to help us make our decisions or our recommendations. So I applaud you for taking your time to come down here and express your thoughts on that. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.